County Board of Education meeting for October. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and at this time, Mrs. Peters will do the invocation.
Thank you. As we discussed at our work session, this is October is Principal Appreciation Month. So I'm reading this for them. "I am the principal, the educational leader of my school. My primary duty is to ensure that education becomes a tool. The students that are in my care are like diamonds in the rough. I mold them with gentle hands, although at times I must be tough. I seek to inspire my teachers to be creative in their thinking so that our students are prepared for a world that's gradually shrinking. I see my students as the future. Their education I seek to ensure. I demand a lot from my teachers, and yet I expect so much more. I fully understand my leadership role to build lives where there are none, to enlist the help of my teachers and parents, so together we can get the job done."
Thank you, Ms. Peters. This month is our school spotlight is Central Elementary, and Principal Harry Clark is here with us, and as well as some of her students. And so Tyree Turpin, Lachlan Boyd, Amelia Imhoff, and Lilly Morgan, as well as Nora Biedecker are going to come up and lead us in the pledge, I believe. Everyone, please stand.
(Singing) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Very enthusiastic.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, and we are so excited that the spotlight is on Central Elementary. And this evening, we have our wonderful students joining us, as well as Brady Boyd, Stephanie Nupert, and Melanie Bowlett. These ladies make up the wonderful team that serves such a wonderful population of all of our students. And tonight, we are going to be highlighting what it's like for the impact of teaching inclusion through physical education and social emotional learning. And Stephanie is going to begin our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Nupert. I'm the instructional coach at Central Elementary School. Today, we want to share with you guys how we support our diverse exceptional children's population at Central Elementary by teaching inclusion through physical education and social emotional learning. Our PE teacher Christina McDonough, the kids refer to her as Ms. G. She could not be here with us tonight, so I hope that we make her proud with this presentation. Central Elementary School is a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. We became that in 2020, and we were the first school in the district to do that. The Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools program is aimed at promoting social inclusion through intentionally planned and implemented activities affecting systems-wide change. With sports as a foundation, the three-component model offers a unique combination of effective activities that equip young people with tools and training to create sports, classroom, and school climates of acceptance. These are school climates where students with disabilities feel welcome and are routinely included in and feel a part of all activities, opportunities, and functions. This is accomplished by implementing inclusive sports, inclusive youth leadership opportunities, and whole-school engagement. The program is designed to be woven into the fabric of the school, enhancing current efforts and providing rich opportunities that lead to meaningful change and creating a socially-inclusive school that supports and engages all learners. Each year, we have to complete several events to qualify. Last year, Currituck County organized this track and field Special Olympics, District Basketball Special Olympics. We participated in Regional Special Olympics, the Special Olympics Torch Run, the Spread the Word Campaign, which the students participate in during specials, and Field Day. These help, these events help keep us running as a Unified Champion School, and they help big time with funding some of the events that we're able to do with the students. Right now, Ms. G is working on one of their programs with the third through fifth graders called Partner Up Power Up. This is how she gets free Field Day shirts for our whole school. She's also collaborating with Ms. Boyd's class and doing a Unified Cooking Club, and you're going to hear more about this in just a moment. Special Olympics is a global movement of people, creating a new world of inclusion and community where every single person is accepted and welcomed regardless of ability or disability. We are helping to make the world a better, healthier, and more joyful place, one athlete, one volunteer, and one family member at a time. This is a Special Olympics Torch Run. It brings about a special torch called the Final Leg Run, during which law enforcement, together with Special Olympic athletes, run the Flame of Hope throughout the host country for the Games, spreading awareness for Central, for Special Olympics, and last year, it came through Currituck County. The Spread the Word Campaign calls on everyone to make their pledge to take action for inclusion in their school, in their community, or their workplace. Spread the Word will provide the platform to make these pledges and the resources to empower local champions to make inclusion a reality. The pledges encourage and promote the students to be a teammate, be a friend, welcome someone who has been left out, sit next to someone alone at lunch, and to say hello to someone in the hallway. Partner Up Power Up is an eight-week training program that is unified to both individuals with and without intellectual disabilities that train, so that they can train together. It can fully be done from home with materials provided and online resources available, and we have some of those materials for you today. The Unified Cooking Club, Ms. Boyd was able to pick a recipe for the students to do together. She picked overnight cookie dough oats. We received the ingredients for free, and each student in her class also received a free apron. This tied into math standards, as they had to measure ingredients to create their recipe. Our Special Olympics buddies partnered up to support Mrs. Boyd's students while making their recipe. The link here shows a video of the students participating in that event, and we hope that after this presentation, this will be shared with you so that you can view that video. Field Day. A Special Olympics Unified Champion School has an inclusive school climate and exudes a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body and staff. The primary activities within these standards include Special Olympics Unified Sports, where students with and without disabilities train and compete as teammates, inclusive youth leadership, and whole-school engagement. This year, it's Ms. G's goal to complete the 10 Standards of Excellence to become a National Banner School. Field Day meets one of the standards for achieving that. A Unified Champion School receiving National Banner recognition is one that has demonstrated commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 national standards of excellence. These standards were developed by a national panel of leaders from Special Olympics and the educational community. Outcomes of being a Unified Champion School is reduced bullying and exclusion, promoting inclusive friendships, overturning negative attitudes, decreasing hurtful language in schools and the community, developing students' leadership skills, and creating communities of caring and respect. As we end our presentation, I wanted to include, sorry, I stopped clicking. I apologize about that. I wanted to include a quote from Ms. G. Ms. G says, "We are very proud of our Unified Program. We have seen great success with students of all ability levels working together. It really is amazing to see traditional barriers be removed and just allow our students to be students. Unified is leading the way for our school and our culture about how all individuals have value and a sense of belonging. Central Elementary School is a place where all students are welcome." We have goodies for you guys. I'm going to invite the kids back up, because I would love for the kids to bring those goodies to you.
(Mumbling)
In your goodies that they are bringing you, you have a bracelet. This is from the Spread the Word pledge.
Thank you.
You're going to get a booklet that's Partner Up Power Up. It gives you all the activities that the kids are doing.
Good job.
And then two flyers, because we would love to invite you to the Special Olympics Track and Field Event, and also to the color line.
Thank you.
I like this. And a nice bracelet. Ah, and a calendar. Did we get that too? Thank you.
We have an extra. Here's an extra.
Oh, it's not a calendar. Does everyone have one? But it's a playbook. Okay. That's neat. That's nice.
I was able to attend last year.
You went last year.
Oh, that's so nice. Thank you.
I love it.
November 18th.
Thank you, Amelia. Thank you so much.
Oh, I like this. November 18th. Thank you.
Okay.
I would love one.
Thank you.
I can't wait.
November 9th.
Oh, I need one of these special ones. Yeah.
It's on my calendar already.
It's a bucket full.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Here's one. He just gave me one, yeah.
Thank you.
Just get him up here for a picture.
This is awesome.
Thank you.
We should. We need to go get a picture.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
Get a picture with him.
Ready? One, two, three, smile. Thank you. Now, we're going to bring a few people in with you, okay?
Thank you.
Great job.
I'm excited, because my neighbor, Amelia, is here.
Make sure I can see everybody. Hang on. All right, three, two, one, smile. Perfect. Thank you.
(Applause)
Thank you so much. That was absolutely amazing. We're really excited that y'all are here to share with us and all the good things that are going on. So at this time, we need to have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved, and we will go on to our work session review.
Good evening.
Dr. Lutz.
And thank you, Central Elementary. Outstanding job. Okay, at our earlier meeting, we first took a deep dive into our 22-23 school data, and we're going to do that again here in a few minutes. We looked over our improvement plans for Currituck Middle School, Currituck County Middle School, and Central Elementary School, and we took another look at our facility use fees, and that will be on our consent agenda this evening, and we had our first reading of the Parents' Bill of Rights, also known as Senate Bill 49.
Thank you. At this time, it's time for our public comment session. The public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up, and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes, and please state your name and address when you come up. We have one person who signed up tonight, Mr. Jeffrey Sadoma.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name's Jeff Sadoma, and I live at 101 Step Side Lane in Moyauk, 279. We saw on the agenda tonight the item about the naming of the new, and it's very exciting for us. We live right by where that's going to be. I just wanted to reiterate tonight how important it is for us to integrate the new school into the community that's already formed in that immediate area and that's still forming around where the new school is going to be. I would really like to reiterate, I don't feel that it should be a fenced-off island. I would like it to be connected to the neighborhoods around it through Avoset, Tulsa Creek, and campus, and I would respectfully suggest the board sponsor holding some sort of design charrette for the construction team to meet with the community and get ideas for improving the infrastructure surrounding the school, the physical school itself, the interaction with the neighborhoods in the area, and all the different types of things that are going to happen in the next two years, roughly two years, while the school's being constructed. I would like to note that there are residents in our immediate neighborhood and the neighborhoods surrounding Waterlea, Wentworth, and those type of areas that are asking different people, what's going in at the entrance to our neighborhood? What's happening out there? What are they constructing? There's a lot of, is it a gas station? Is it a grocery store? And I'm frequently asked, you know, what's going on? Because people know I go to the school board meetings, I say, you know, it's a new, it's a new school. Oh, I didn't know we were going to have one of those. So again, I'd like to, you know, I'd volunteer my services if it would help. We could have it at the library, perhaps. It's a county building. Get everybody in there and just talk about what's happening in the neighborhood. I think it was interesting to note that I think there's 500 houses in the three neighborhoods now, with more on the way. It seems like every day, but just doing the rough math, I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that there's going to be at least two classrooms of each grade in the new school that'll just be people from Wentworth, Waterlea, and Glenmore.
Wow.
If not more. And I'd also like to volunteer to start a PTO for the new school, even though it's not even built yet.
Right.
So, thank you for having us, and look forward to hearing more updates on the new school. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, student board member reports. So we start. Do y'all care? Okay, Sophia?
Thank you. Starting with Central Elementary. Central Elementary has fallen into fall. Students learned about fire safety and prevention and learned the six steps to take in case of a fire. CES will hold a Title I informational parent night on Thursday, October 26, from 5:00 to 7:00. This is a great opportunity for parents to experience the day as a student learner. Parents are also invited to visit the book fair. CCHS. Congratulations to Michael Ranky, Savannah Figaro, Parker Capel, and Leland Gaylord. These students are esports state qualifiers. Our night's esports team placed third at regionals and will move on to the state competition. Congratulations to our 23-24 CCHS homecoming king and queen, Edmund Bailey and Neandrol Mentor. CCMS. Currituck County Middle School and Currituck County Public Library hosted an event for the solar eclipse last Saturday, October 14. Students had a morning of fun and crafts to prepare for the afternoon's solar eclipse. They enjoyed free sweets from Dunkin' Donuts, and parents could get coffee from the Bruin Cafe coffee truck. Spirit Week is next week. We will have our pep rally on Wednesday, the 25th, for our last home football game, and a PBIS trick-or-treat activity on Friday. Griggs Elementary. Griggs Elementary has had a very busy month. All the students voted for student council representative positions. These representatives will be supporting a food drive in November and a toy drive in December. For the construction month, our fifth graders built birdhouses with the CTE department, and our third and fourth graders will complete a construction lesson with Carbo Construction Company. Our November Fall Family Festival will be Thursday, October 26, from 5:00 to 6:30. Jarvisburg Elementary. Jarvisburg Elementary had two student, two students representatives at the science fair hosted by Riley Parker. We had a visit from the lower Currituck Fire Department last week. Our Title I family reading night was last night, and we have the book fair this week. Thank you to Jennifer Woods and Haley Bartolata for bringing CTE to our fifth graders on Monday.
All right, I'm going to start with JP-Napp Early College. JP-Napp hosted an academic expo on October 3, and was a success in broadening the horizons of our students across all grade levels, 9 through 13. This collaborative platform enabled students to engage in meaningful dialogues about academic and career paths, reinforcing our commitment to preparing them for the diverse opportunities that lie ahead. Our civic students recently undertook an innovative, hands-on learning project centered on the U.S. Constitution's amendments. The project engaged students in creating pictionary-style clues on T-shirts, which they wore throughout the subsequent day to spark interactive discussions with faculty members. One ambitious student extended this exercise to central office, exemplifying the kind of initiative and outreach we encourage in our academic community. Next will be Knott's Island Elementary. Knott's Island held a creative cones competition where our students submitted their ideas on how to decorate our traffic cones out front with a "What does Knott's Island mean to me?" theme. We were able to narrow our submissions down to 12 finalists, and then we enlisted with the help of our Currituck County Schools Central Office folks to vote for their favorite designs. We are proud to announce our winners. For kindergarten is Tenley Nurl. For first grade is Leilani Runge. Second grade is Maddie Shu. Third grade is Connor McGowan. Fourth grade is Liam Ventress. And fifth grade is Dawn Rae Perry. Congratulations to these wood ducks. Next is Moyauk Elementary. Moyauk Elementary School students and staff are off to a great start for our fall. Kindergarten students are taking a field trip to Morris Farm Market on Thursday, October 19. Fifth grade students are working with the CTE department to learn about the construction pathway while building birdhouses. We have an excellent red ribbon week planned for our students and staff, which includes a book character parade. Our book fair begins on Friday, October 27, and runs through November 3. Our fall festival will be held on Friday, October 27, beginning at 5:00 p.m. MES is on the path to a successful 2023-24 school year. Next will be Moyauk Middle. There's lots to celebrate at MMS. Our book fair, fall season, pep rally, and PTO family dinner and game night were great successes. We are proud of our eighth-grade band members who performed beautifully at the marching nights at Homecoming, and our Bulldog Football Team that remains undefeated. Next is Shawboro Elementary. October has been a busy month for Shawboro. We hosted our third annual trunk-or-tree event and had over 600 kids attend. Thank you to our PTO and all the community members who made that event a success. We are looking forward to red ribbon week starting on Monday. We will have spirit days for kids and multiple guest speakers throughout the week. Check our Facebook page and Class Dojo story for more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have the 2022-23 school data. Ms. Kristi Hodges, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is going to join us to share that with us. And I believe Ms. Doughty and Ms. Reynolds as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Lutz. This evening, I will share accountability results from the 2022-2023 academic year, as well as a statewide and district year-over-year analysis report from NCDPI's Office of Early of Learning Recovery and the EVOs team at SAS. NCDPI worked with SAS to develop a rigorous and empirical way to answer one of the most persistent policy questions. How will we know when the state, districts, and schools have recovered in North Carolina? The year-over-year model will speak to what you see on this timeline, with the exception of the 2022-2023 data. SAS is expected to formally add the 2022-2023 data to this report by January. However, I will speak to the 2022-2023 data throughout the presentation. We will take a look at pre-pandemic trends from 2013 to 2019. You'll note that in 2016, the State Board of Education approved new K-12, ELA, and math standards, with implementation beginning in 2017. In 2019-2020 COVID year, no assessments were given in the spring of 2020. 2020-2021 is labeled as pandemic impact. This is the first time administering assessments after COVID. It is important to note the 95 participation rule for testing was not required by the state this year. This timeframe also notes our initial planning and listening sessions for the curricular strategic plan. 2021-2022 represents a recovery response and the implementation of the curricular strategic plan. And finally, 2022-2023 will represent our most recent testing year and continued recovery. In the folder shared earlier with you, you will have three different reports. The first is Currituck County's Schools Year-Over-Year Trends and Impact from the Pandemic. In this document, you will have results from the K-8 Math, K-8 Reading, Grades 5 and 8 Science, and three of our four EOCs, Math 1, English 2, and Biology. Historical data will be provided back to 2013. Math 3 is not included in this year-over-year report, as its first administration was during the 2018-2019 academic year. Therefore, SAS did not have historical data to address impacts from the pandemic. However, we will share Math 3 data from 2022-2023. I will highlight several slides to share proficiency data, and Ms. Doughty will follow and provide information regarding school performance grades, the second set of data that you have in your folder. In the final portion of this presentation, I will share our recovery data that can also be found in your folder. The first slide you see here represents information found on the first page of your document. This graph represents EOG, Math 3 results, and again, this information is specific to our district. Since all graphs will look the same, I'd like to take a moment to speak to the information on the right that will assist with understanding the data. The dot represents the district's average scale score and the achievement averaged over all test takers in our district. You can see the first two data points representing a scale score of 548 in both 2013 and 2014. The purple solid line is the district achievement trajectory. This line shows our district's estimated trajectory from pre-pandemic to recovery response. The dotted purple line is the trend line, showing where our district was expected to perform had COVID not disrupted learning. The dotted blue line represents the district's achievement average over three years prior to the pandemic, 2017 to 2018. The gray solid line represents the state's trajectory averaged over all districts across the state, and the dotted gray line represents the pandemic trend line extended into post-pandemic period and averaged over all districts in the state. You'll also note the table at the bottom right. This shows scale score, percent proficient, and student attendance count. We've added the 2022-2023 district and state data in the hexagon on the slides that you will see. If we take a close look at this graph, our response to the pandemic was significant for our third-grade math students, falling from 80% proficient in 2019 to 57% proficient in 2021. In 2022, student proficiency increased to 62%, and in 2023, our district came close to pre-pandemic results, with 78% of our third-grade students showing proficiency. I would like to take you to math grade 8 on page 7. From 2017 to 2019, eighth-grade students who took Math 1
Grades 5 and 8 Science, and three of our four EOCs: Math 1, English 2, and Biology. Historical data will be provided back to 2013. Math 3 is not included in this year-over-year report as its first administration was during the 2018-2019 academic year. Therefore, SAS did not have historical data to address impacts from the pandemic. However, we will share Math 3 data from 2022-2023. I will highlight several slides to share proficiency data, and Ms. Doughty will follow and provide information regarding school performance grades, the second set of data that you have in your folder. In the final portion of this presentation, I will share our recovery data that can also be found in your folder. The first slide you see here represents information found on the first page of your document. This graph represents EOG, Math 3 results, and again, this information is specific to our district. Since all graphs will look the same, I'd like to take a moment to speak to the information on the right that will assist with understanding the data. The dot represents the district's average scale score and the achievement averaged over all test takers in our district. You can see the first two data points representing a scale score of 548 in both 2013 and 2014. The purple solid line is the district achievement trajectory. This line shows our district's estimated trajectory from pre-pandemic to recovery response. The dotted purple line is the trend line, showing where our district was expected to perform had COVID not disrupted learning. The dotted blue line represents the district's achievement average over three years prior to the pandemic, 2017 to 2018. The gray solid line represents the state's trajectory averaged over all districts across the state. And the dotted gray line represents the pandemic trend line extended into post-pandemic period and averaged over all districts in the state. You'll also note the table at the bottom right. This shows scale score, percent proficient, and student attendance count. We've added the 2022-2023 district and state data in the hexagon on the slides that you will see. If we take a close look at this graph, our response to the pandemic was significant for our third-grade math students, falling from eighty percent proficient in 2019 to fifty-seven percent proficient in 2021. In 2022, student proficiency increased to sixty-two percent, and in 2023, our district came close to pre-pandemic results with seventy-eight percent of our third-grade students showing proficiency. I would like to take you to Math Grade 8 on Page 7. From 2017 to 2019, eighth-grade students who took Math 1 were required to take both the eighth-grade math end-of-grade assessment and the Math 1 assessment. The data you see here teases out eighth-grade students who did take Math 1 assessment. This data that you're looking at only reflects eighth-grade students who took the eighth-grade Math EOG. If you look at our pre-pandemic trend data, eighth-grade math students averaged about thirty-three percent proficiency. In 2021, the pandemic year proficiency dropped significantly to nine percent. Gained some ground in 2022 with thirty percent of our students proficient, and in 2023 saw a fourteen percentage point increase with forty-four percent of our students proficient, exceeding the pre-pandemic average. Let's take a look at Math 1 on Page 8. You'll note that in 2013, students were performing well below the state's average at sixteen percent proficient. You'll note with the new standards implemented in 2017, student proficiency improves. Our Math 1 students were impacted in 2021, where only fifty percent of our students were proficient. In 2023, our district percentage increased to fifty-one percent proficient compared to the state's average of thirty-six percent proficient. And now, we're going to shift to reading. We will begin Grade 3 reading on Page 9. This is an interesting graph, as you'll note the downward trend from the 2013 to 2019 period. Additionally, it is important to note this group of students were in kindergarten during the onset of the pandemic in 2020, nineteen, 2020. The pandemic impact in 2021 saw fifty-two percent of our third-grade students proficient in reading. In the initial recovery year, 2022, student proficiency dropped to forty-six percent. In 2022-2023, student proficiency increased twelve percentage points, with fifty-eight percent of our third graders proficient. Let's take a look at Grade 6 reading on Page 12. Here, you'll note a similar trend to Grade 3 reading, where both the district and state were on a downward trend. The pandemic impact shows fifty-one percent of our students proficient in 2021, with a decrease in proficiency at forty-eight percent in 2022. In 2023, we did not see a change, as forty-eight percent of our students were proficient in reading during this year as well. Slide 7 takes us to Page 15 and English 2. This is an anomaly. This is the only tested area that saw a positive change in 2021, the pandemic impact year, where sixty-seven percent of our students demonstrated proficiency. SAS does not have a clear explanation of this, as this increase was a statewide trend. Our district dipped in 2022 with fifty-five percent of students demonstrating proficiency. In 2023, student proficiency increased to fifty-nine percent. On Page 16, you'll see Science Grade 5. With the exception of 2013, our pre-pandemic trend was fairly steady with approximately seventy percent of our students demonstrating proficiency. In 2021, sixty-three percent of our students were proficient, and in 2022, sixty-seven percent were proficient. You'll note that in 2023, seventy-two percent of our students were proficient, returning to pre-pandemic numbers. On Page 17, you'll note similarities between Grade 8 Science and Grade 5 Science. Pre-pandemic, Grade 8 students typically performed well, averaging eighty-three percent proficiency. In 2021, seventy-four percent of our students were proficient. In both our recovery year, 2022, and in 2023, students performed at eighty-two percent proficiency, again, close to our pre-pandemic numbers. And lastly, we'll take a look at Biology. Our pre-pandemic average was approximately fifty-six percent proficient. The pandemic impact showed student proficiency at fifty-seven percent in 2021, with a drop in 2022 to fifty-two percent proficiency. The 2023 data shows a twelve percent point increase in student proficiency at sixty-four percent, exceeding the pre-pandemic average. This table represents the data for all sets. The gray areas represent data that I did not formally review with you today. Here, you see the current 22-23 district and state proficiency data and the district point percentage change from the 2021-2022 assessment data. I'm now going to turn it over to Mrs. Doughty.
I'll do it from sitting down. I'm not used to doing that. Every district or charter school receives an A-through-F letter grade based on eighty percent of the school's achievement score, calculated by using a composite method based on the sum of points earned by a school on all indicators measured for that school, and twenty percent on a student's academic growth. That compares the actual performance on a school's students to their expected performance based on the statewide statistical model. Here, you see those assessments and indicators used to calculate the achievement scores for a school. You notice that as you move from elementary to middle, and middle then to high, additional indicators are added. One important note is that in order for a test or a subgroup to be used in any part of an indicator, there must be at least thirty participants. This school year, for example, the fifth-grade science scores alone at Central Elementary, Knott's Island Elementary, and Griggs Elementary were not factored in to their school performance grade because the fifth-grade class sizes were below thirty students. Thus, Science EOG Grade 5 was not factored into the school's achievement score. On this slide, you'll see a breakdown in the percentage of schools that earned a school performance letter grade in our district, in the northeast region of North Carolina, and across the state. And here, you will see a comparison of school performance grades from last year to this academic year. Of note on this slide in particular, you will notice that, and we had discussion in our work session, that schools may earn a letter grade of a C or higher, yet still fail to meet growth. And conversely, schools that receive a letter grade of D may also meet growth. In the 21-22 school year, we had 1B, eight Cs, and 1D. And this following year, the 22-23 school year, we had 1A, 1B, six Cs, and two Ds. And finally, DPI issues this disclaimer to school accountability data, to anyone looking at school accountability data, and urges the use of caution when trying to compare results to previous years, given that schools continue to deal with the effects from the pandemic. So now, the question becomes, Ms. Hodges, now what with that?
The belief and mission statements from our Curricular Strategic Plan truly reflect our commitment to all stakeholders: students, teachers, and families. When you tease out the bolded phrases in both statements, you'll note the following. Rigorous instruction. At the onset of the pandemic, the district partnered with Weston Kiesnick, who worked with teachers, administrators, and instructional coaches to focus on John Hattie's high-effect size instructional strategies. We continue with Weston's work, providing ongoing support at school-level PLCs. Standards-aligned curriculum. K-12 pacing guides, designed by our district teacher leaders, ensure all grade-level standards are taught by the end of each academic year, and curriculum resources are vetted and selected to ensure standard alignment. High-quality learning resources. As part of the Curricular Strategic Plan, resources were carefully selected. A document with expected and optional use resources guides the work for our teachers. Clear expectations. Each grade span and content area have curricular parameters that provide guidance to teachers of all four core subjects. Training. Professional development is consistent and intentional. Convocation and Tech Fest offer opportunities for growth in regards to both expected and optional resources. Early Release Fridays provide opportunities for pre-K5 teachers of letters to continue their state-mandated training, as well as opportunities for departments across the district to meet and collaborate. Continued support. With the support of this board, as well as our county commissioners, we have seven instructional coaches and two literacy coaches. Additionally, we've invested in two-five instructional assistants to support classroom teachers with small-group reading instruction. Returning to the policy question I shared at the very beginning of today's presentation. How will we know when the state, districts, and schools have recovered in North Carolina? I would like to share two data tables that highlight our recovery and the good work, the good in our work. The good work of our diligent and dedicated teachers, the good work of our administration team who ensures teachers are engaged and supported at the school level, and the good work of our students who are learning and recovering. In taking a look at this table, the data represents a comparison of the pre-pandemic average, which covers 2013 to 2019, and our second year of recovery, 2022-2023. The green notes are where our 2022-2023 data exceeded pre-pandemic data in regards to proficiency percentages. Math, Grades 3, 5, 7, 6, 7, and 8; Grade 5 Science and Biology. Yellow denotes where there was either no change or less than five percentage points from the pre-pandemic average. Grade 4 Math, Math 1, Reading, Grades 3, 4, 8, and English 2, and Grade 8 Science. And the red shows the grade level and content areas where our proficiency percentage shows a gap greater than five points. Grade 5 Reading, Grade 6 Reading, and Grade 7 Reading. This last table represents our road to recovery. The state identifies 2021-2022 as the recovery year. This table compares the first year of recovery, 2022, to the most recent data from 2023, our second year of recovery. As you can see, fourteen of our eighteen-tested subject areas showed proficiency percentage growth from 2022 to 2023. Two of our subjects, Grade 6 Reading and Grade 8 Science, remained the same, and we saw a one-point decrease with Grade 4 Math and a three-point decrease in Grade 7 Math. The district's Curricular Strategic Plan is a three-to-five-year roadmap, designed to ensure we grow our students into the best versions of themselves. August marked the beginning of Year 3. Through dedicated and sustained efforts and a steadfast focus on excellence, our current trajectory will undoubtedly yield a continued upward trend. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies. We had a very robust and long discussion regarding this at our work session and are certainly pleased with everything that you shared with us.
Kristi, I do have one question, just because I was looking over something at dinner. Part of the achievement score indicator is the English learner's progress on language proficiency test. Is that right?
Yes.
So what do we have in the district in terms of support for those students?
You want me to speak to it? Yep, we can. We're going to get all of us up here to speak to. So first, making sure we understand that students are eligible to take those tests, and they don't count in our scores until they're in Year 3. Am I correct?
So the first year, the way English language learners are tested in the business rules, they're tested in their first year of enrollment for baseline. They don't count in proficiency or growth. The second year, they count just for growth. And the third year, that they're in our schools, they count for proficiency and growth. And those assessments are given every February-March date with specifically-designed access testing.
For them?
For them.
Okay.
And we do have two support personnel in the district. Ms. Arrington could speak to that if she needs to, to support those students.
Yeah, I just noticed that I hadn't even looked at that, and I just think that's something important for the community to understand.
Now, I will, and Ms. Arrington, share with us the growth in that population, because it will factor in more as that population grows for us. I believe we saw a growth increase into one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty students now that meet that category. So whereas before, we may have pockets that not counted for accountability models, we are growing to the point where it does affect some scores.
And I think that's a discussion to have, because when we talk about resources that we need and how we're going to continue to ask for things, or if we go to county commissioners and ask for things, they might not understand why we need that additional support. It is, the work I do, I work in school districts that have large population of non-English speakers, and it's a whole other resource your school system needs, because those children deserve access as well. So I just noticed it on the model, but thank you. So we currently have two support staff, but a hundred and twenty, around over a hundred students.
A hundred and ten students that are served, and then there's an additional number of students, I believe it's eighteen, that are monitored.
Wow.
They take, when they take the access test in that January to March timeframe, it gives them a level of English proficiency on reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then, based on the scores that they get back, that's how their services or their service time is determined.
That would make sense, yeah.
I didn't mean to do it on the spot. I just saw it at dinner, but you can see that y'all know what you're talking about, because everybody had the answer.
Of course they do. Anybody else?
I just was wondering real quick, sorry. On that data about only classes of thirty or more, what's the reasoning of that? I mean, you could have some really high scores in these smaller...
So, you know, Dr. Lutz is certainly the more statistician than I am, but we have these discussions all the time. So this year, for example, science scores were high. You saw Kristi's data presented. They would have likely helped those school buildings move from a C to a B, and potentially, Knott's Island even could have been closer to an A. Other years, you could have scores when the subset is so small, and they could potentially tank you and really hurt you and drop you a whole letter grade. So the reason behind that thirty as the magical number is to make sure that you have a good subset of data, that your number pool's not so small, that one child makes such a big difference in those data points. And if I didn't, Dr. Lutz proud, then I've listened to all of it.
Good answer. It's reliable data with thirty.
Yeah, it's reliable.
Okay. I just, and I was thinking the upward trend, but I guess, like you explained, it could also really push them down.
Because there have been years where, had it counted, it could have, you know, not done the help that we thought it would.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. All the hard work you did for that. Okay, Dr. Lutz, naming of the new elementary school.
Well, with the groundbreaking coming up later this month, and we have been referring to the Talls Creek Elementary site for, seems like forever. It's been at least a year and a half, if not more. Brief background, I mean, in Currituck County, our schools by and large are named by the area, especially our elementaries, with the exception of Griggs, have been named by the area in which they're located. Shawboro, Jarvisburg, Moyoc, Central is Central into the county. And so, I think it's time to name our new elementary school. So I am looking for, I can't make an action or move forward.
I would like to make a motion that we name our new school Talls Creek Elementary School.
I would second that.
All right, we have a second, first and a second discussion.
I would just like to say, we had a speaker this evening who asked that the communities be involved. So I would like to see them not necessarily involved in naming the school, but in anything we can get input from them on helping with that school.
I took note.
I just was going to say, I was watching him take notes.
And maybe even revisit those colors if they're not etched in stone.
They're etched. They're etched.
And I would just caution that the school colors are very much representative of Currituck County, and the wetlands and the waterways that exhibit. The tiger, don't let that throw you. Elementary mascots, you know, don't really carry the same connotation that a high school or middle school athletic mascot does, where uniforms match and everything matches. So I think that when the public sees the renderings for the school, it will very much look like the waterways and the marshlands of Currituck County.
And so, the colors of the mascot will not necessarily, they won't take over the school.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, I learned the term muted orange.
Okay.
Not orange.
So that will just be a touch here and a touch there.
Maybe just in the gym is where you're going to notice.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. So I have a motion and a second, and with no further discussion, all those in favor of naming the new school, Tolls Creek Elementary, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. The ayes have it, and our new school is Tolls Creek Elementary. Yay! Exciting.
Come to fruition.
Come to fruition. Okay, Ms. Michelle has budget amendments for us to take action on.
Good evening, Chairman Kraft, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. This evening, I have three budget amendments for your approval, starting with the first one in your packet, which is the State Public School Fund. This is actually budget amendment number two for our state fund. It increased by eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. We budgeted for a partial allotment for state textbooks, and we transferred budget from at-risk to central office administration to recover, to recover the required state match for the school nutrition director. And I just want to make a clarification with this, when we're talking about moving funds from at-risk, we're not reducing the allotment, this was excess funds that we had sitting there while we were waiting for a state budget, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
The next one in your packet is our federal fund, this is the first budget amendment for federal, and bear with me, because there's a lot going on here. We had an increase of two million, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-eight cent. We received the following allotments for federal. CTE program improvement, McKinney-Vento homeless grant, IDEA six-B preschool, Title One, ID six-B handicapped, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, rural and low-income schools, also known as Title Five, IDEA six-B special needs targeted, S R two COVID response, S R two learning loss, S R two summer career, S R three, S R three homeless one, and S R three homeless two. System-wide support funds were reallocated from S R three to instructional services, and the reason for that is the county was kind enough to give us extra capital outlay money, so we're going to be using those funds to cover the HVAC project that we had in S R three. And S R two funds are expiring this year, so those are going away. And lastly, we have our other local fund, this is budget amendment number three. We increased here by one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-four cent. We budgeted for school technology, facilities, general operations, supplies and materials, rental fees, Chromebook fees, Medicaid fee for service reimbursement, the Currituck Kids Grant, and the Currituck Education Foundation. Any questions?
Anybody? So do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as stated by Ms...
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And since there were no questions, I'm assuming there's no discussion. So all those in favor of approving the budget amendments as stated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, budget amendments are passed. Thank you so much. I don't know how you keep all that together. Okay, field trip requests. Dr. Lutz?
Our cross-country, both our boys and girls went to a cross-country invitational in Cary, North Carolina on October sixth and seventh, and that is our only field trip request. The cross-country team should after next weekend be making another request to head to the states if they perform as they should.
Very good. Exciting. Next, we have the consent agenda, that is an action item, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, making note that we've got the updated fee schedule as passed out during the work session.
Okay. I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, state by saying aye. 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 Those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. So informational items, our groundbreaking ceremony for our new elementary school is at ten AM, October twenty-seventh, which is next Friday, right?
Yes.
Yes, next Friday, at Tolls Creek Road Site. Pray for no rain. The Board of Education meetings are November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, work session at PLC at four PM, and the Board of Education meeting at the historic Currituck County Courthouse at six-thirty. And at this time, we'll have board member and superintendent comments, and I'll start with Mr. Banks.
This, a couple weeks ago, I did have opportunity to walk around Griggs Elementary School and check out the new story site. They have made a contribution there with parts of equipment and stuff for those children. Nice to see SRO out there, and y'all, I don't know if the principal's here. But I just got a sign that said Mike, so that's why. But y'all got a real good SRO officer out there. He was actually head of the Regional Drug Task Force, and now he's a elementary school SRO. So he's getting close to retirement, I think.
Okay. Ms. Rose?
I too had the opportunity to visit some schools, and I met the Griggs SRO, and it's been a real pleasure meeting the SROs throughout the county, and they all seem so positive and happy to be where they are, protecting our students. And so hats off to the Sheriff's Department Air Commissioners, that we got those in place. I was able to attend a volleyball game between the two middle schools in the county, and that was good, both teams were doing well. And the CCHS homecoming, it was great to see lots and lots of folks there, lots of folks I hadn't seen in a long time. I want to give a shout-out to all the staff for all the events you provide for our students and families after school. I know that you go above and beyond, and maybe your own families miss out on seeing you, but I think those events are important for our students and their families. On Tuesday, Moyac Middle School had a spaghetti dinner before their PTA meeting, and, you know, I was very impressed with how they conducted that meeting, you know, they had the agenda, they had the treasures report, and they really had it together. Last night, I was able to attend the Jarvisburg Elementary School Title One night, that was such a success. Students were engaged in reading activities, there was a book fair, and it ended with trick-or-treating for the children. So we've got some events coming up that I hope you all will be able to attend to celebrate Halloween. We've got on the twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, the twenty-seventh, we have two fall festivals that I know of, Moyac Elementary School and Knott's Island Elementary. I'm going to try to make both of those, even though they're on both sides of the water. And then on the thirtieth, we've got a fun event coming up at the high school, the Monster Bash baseball game. I think that's a fundraiser for the baseball team, so go out and support them if you can. That's a lot of fun, too. Festival atmosphere, you can wear your costumes and see our baseball team playing in costume.
Oh, wow, that'll be fun. Ms. Parker?
Thank you to the community for the support in our schools. It's really been amazing to see at the beginning of the school year just how much community engagement we do have. I was excited to see so many citizens at our homecoming games, supporting our band and our cheerleaders and cheerleaders in our football teams, and it was a good problem that we had standing room only. That's always a good problem when we have that many members of our community out. I do have a special thanks to all the elementaries that participated in the science fair. I will not lie, I'm a little partial because my daughter sponsored it, but I also know that she would not have been able to do that without the staff that really was behind her and supported her. She met with Greta Nelson and Jamie Hayslip this summer and asked them about this idea of doing an elementary science fair, they supported her in that. Dr. Durham and Ms. Fields then met with her and allowed her to use the school. She was able to fill out facility use through I VAT and the superintendent's office, and the school system really was very supportive in her providing this science fair for the students. And what was amazing was to see these kids so excited about science. There were kids, Griggs took the cake with the most students. Ms. Hill there actually just really encouraged her students to participate, and it's exciting for me, you know, we're a sports family, and that's kind of what we do, but I always say that my kids are really science nerds, that's what they love, and if there was science competition every week, that's what they would be doing. But it was so exciting to see these kids setting up their experiments and just so excited about telling everyone about it. Lynette Warden and Ms. Fields gave up their Saturday to come out and judge. They went around to every student, every student had to, they had a presentation, they had to tell about their experiment. I mean, I was blown away by what these children did. They had to pick a third through fifth-grade standard and then tell about it, and they did a presentation on it. Alex and Daphne from Griggs won first and second, Ronald from Charbro won third, and his reaction when his name was called, that he had won third place. But these kids, they were crushing metal cans with cold water, they were doing magnetic, they had tracks, and they had weather. It was just unbelievable, and just the input from parents, that they were so excited that their kids had a chance to shine. So I hope that's something we can continue, it was neat, we had a couple students, Damon Duke and, oh gosh, she's going to kill me, but I don't remember her name at this time, Kylie. Kylie, who's also in beta, wants to take this on as her senior project next year, and really wants to do it. So I was just excited to see those kids, and then to see high school kids that were just as excited about science. And then I do have to give a shout-out to Elizabeth City Trophy, gave the kids trophies, Wise Guys Pizza gave every kid that participated a pizza, and he gave the top three winners a cash prize. So it was just really a win-win day for Currituck, and it took everybody working together. So thank you to the staff and central office for supporting that.
Ms. Peters?
All right, thank you. Yes, October is busy, and as everyone's gone around talking about all these big events, once again, principals are important. Usually at all these events that we're all discussing, the principals are always there, just walking around, making sure everything's going good, so again, we thank them. And our sports are in full swing, I believe our middle schools and high schools are doing very well. October sixth, they have actually a day for National Coaches Day, so just a shout-out to thank all of our coaches and assistant coaches, they, we appreciate you and thanks for all you do. I attended the homecoming, that was exciting, it was a really big crowd, lots of people there, excitement in the air. Thank you to the community, staff, families, and commissioners that attended to show support for our kids. Congrats to our homecoming court and our King Ed Bailey and Queen Nia Jewel mentor, and good luck to them tomorrow night. I know the Knights have a big football game tomorrow night, so we wish them well. The first nine weeks has come into a close, so we hope that everyone's getting ready for that, report cards will be going home soon. We know staff is working hard, of course, we're still trying to fill vacancies, so just always be, have that on your mind. There's lots of fun things going on, festivals, so we appreciate everyone's support, and to all the littles, we hope you all have a happy and safe Halloween.
Dr. Lutz?
All right, let's not forget that the Cognia stakeholder surveys will be open until tomorrow afternoon. That information went out, everybody has access, please take a moment and fill that out as part of our accreditation process. November ninth, we have our Special Olympics at Currituck County High School, we heard about it to kick off our meeting today. If you need your bucket filled, come by, it starts at ten AM. It is just a wonderful event and is just good for the soul. And thank you, Ms. Miller and your department, along with Central for leading that work. More good news, state raises are in, and all the staff get a raise, local employees and state, so the state gives a raise, and we match that at the local level, and we thank our county commissioners for that opportunity to do that. We don't treat our employees differently because some is under state funding and others are local. And again, the family and community support is greatly appreciated. It is ongoing and continuous, when something is needed in Currituck, there's always a way to get it done. Everything from people who donate generously for school lunch funds, for kids that are families that may be struggling, to Currituck Kids, to Currituck Education Foundation, and ultimately, our parents, so we thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely. So I visited all of our schools this month, there's lots of learning and fun going on. Griggs Elementary was campaigning when I was there for student council elections, and I told them I was ready to send them to Washington. Jarvisburg students were reading up a storm, three weeks ago, K-two students had already read almost fifteen hundred books. I called a Currituck Middle School volleyball game and half of a Currituck County High School soccer game, because I didn't dress for the call. I sat in on a presentation that Moyac Fire Department gave at Moyac Elementary School, and I want to give a shout-out to the lower Currituck Fire Department, the Knott's Island Fire Department, the Moyac Fire Department, and the Crawford Fire Department, goodness. Because all of our elementary schools have had presentations this past week or week before last for the fire prevention, and they do an amazing job, and it's just really important for the little ones to see them in all that gear so that they know what they're going to look like if there is a fire and they have to rescue them, so they won't be frightened, because as one of the guys from Moyac said, we kind of look like Darth Vader, and we sound like him, too. Student editor at JPNAH Early College, Ashley, she's the yearbook editor, asked me to help her with a timeline of history of the school, and so with the help of Ms. Jones, Ms. Doughty, and my past history, we were able to do that. And so in nineteen twenty-five, Currituck School was built, and it stayed one through eighth grade until nineteen sixty, when it became JPNAH High School, and that was the high school until nineteen seventy-six, and from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen ninety-eight, it was JPNAH Junior High School. And then in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight, it was JPNAH Elementary School, and in two thousand and eight, it became JPNAH Early College. So just a little, just a little history of Currituck. And with that, I motion that we adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.